Yeah. People online, so that's good. Yeah. All right, are we live and recording? Just a nod. Start.
Are we recording? Okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you, thanks for checking.
Oh, of course.
All right, good evening, everybody, and welcome to tonight's City of Tumwater Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, September 23rd, 2025, 7:00 PM, and we are called to order. I'll do a roll call. Commissioner Daniel.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Great, Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Great, Commissioner Kotek. Maybe she'll join us later. Commissioner Nelson.
Here.
Very good. Vice Chair Staff.
Here.
And me, Commissioner Robbins. We do have a quorum, so we'll just keep rolling. Are there any changes to our agenda tonight that anybody has? Not seeing any? We'll move forward. Let's go to item four, approval of minutes. We have several sets. Any comments, remarks, revisions, motions?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
All four sets?
I'm getting them up right now. I want to make sure I read through all of them.
Sure.
Does anybody else want to make a motion?
Okay. Does anybody else want to make a motion in place of? Mr. Staff?
Yeah, motion to approve November 26th, 2024's minutes, January 14th, 2025, February 11th, 2025, and August 26th, 2025.
Very good. There's second.
I'll second.
Great, thanks, Commissioner Edwards. It's been moved and seconded to approve all four sets of our minutes from various times here in the past. Before we take a vote, is there any last chance for revisions, comments, anything like that? All right, we'll move to a vote. It's been moved and seconded to approve four sets of planning commission minutes from November 26th, 2024, from January 14th, 2025, from February 11th, 2025, and August 26th, 2025. All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, their minutes are approved. Let's go to Commissioner Report. Anybody want to bring it up, bring up anything for the good of the order?
Chair Robbins.
Yes.
I apologize, I did notice that we had two commissioners on mute as we're taking the vote. Do you mind if we?
Let's go back and make sure, okay? That makes, that makes perfect sense.
Thank you.
Did you all hear that? We, we had you on mute, so we may not have been able to hear you if you voiced, voiced your vote. Would you mind repeating, are you in favor of approving the sets of minutes? Say aye.
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 Okay, is anybody opposed? All right, looks like we're good, they are approved. Thanks for bringing that up, Dana. All right, Commissioner Reports. Anything you want to bring up? All right, Director's Report. Brad, anything you want to bring up?
Just that we're patiently waiting for our deputy to start on October 16th. We're not counting the number of days, 28. That's pretty much it. Nothing else of excitement.
Okay, good deal. I said it's quiet, maybe. Okay. Do we have anybody from the public online with us? Or did we hear from anybody in the meantime, aside from our, aside from our conversation later on our, on our comp plan docket? But general comments, did we have anybody?
We have two people online, and we can ask them if they're.
Sure. Would Megumi Sugara? I'll call on you first. If you would like to address the Planning Commission on general matters, you'll get an opportunity during a public hearing we're having in just a bit on another topic, but general matters tonight. And if so, would you say your name and where you live, and if you represent any entity?
Hi, thank you for the invitation. My name is Megumi Sugihara. I live in Olympia, Washington. I'm curious about your food system planning, so I came to observe. Thank you for having me. No general question.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate you taking the time to be here. We'll get to that topic in just a moment. Let's go to Mitch Lewis. If you would like to just address the Planning Commission on general matters, this would be your time. If you could say your name and where you live, and if you represent any organization or business.
Yes, hi. Good afternoon, good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, hi, I'm Mitch Lewis. I'm co-owner of Summit Farms with my wife Mitch Lewit, with Michelle, and we're here to, I'm here to represent as well the local food planning part of it, and working closely with Rebecca on the report that was issued.
Great, thank you. Thanks for taking the time to be here.
I forgot to mention our location. We are technically Olympia, but we're on the border with Tumwater and Tenino, and we've been running as well the Tumwater Farmers Market until recently, as well as working with the Tumwater Schools. So, yeah, thank you for having us.
Great, thank you. Thanks for that. All right.
We did receive public comment.
Okay.
From Olympia Master Builders. That's related to the CFP.
Let's, let's kind of read that into our, just when we have that discussion. Cool. All right. No other public comment, I take it, since we last met. Okay, very good. Well, let's move on to item eight, which are, which is our public hearing, a formal public hearing on resolution number R 25, 2025-015, our food system plan. And I'm going to go through and describe how we're going to conduct the, the public hearing portion of our meeting tonight, and then we'll go, and then we'll go through it. Got my handy dandy cheat sheet, which I very much appreciate. So, welcome, everybody, for being here tonight. I'm the Chair of the Planning Commission, Elizabeth Robbins. We have a quorum of our commissioners here with us tonight, so we should be able to take action tonight if we so choose. And we have a number of City of Tumwater staff, as well as our consultants who help prepare the, the food system plan tonight. So, we're well-equipped to handle, if we have questions or what have you. So, our purpose tonight is to, in conducting the public hearing, is to consider whether we wish to forward a recommendation to City Council on a resolution about the food system plan, to whether to adopt it or not. And so, that's our purpose here tonight in holding the public hearing, kind of one, one more attempt to see if there are public remarks on the, on the resolution before us when we make a recommendation to City Council. So, when I open the public, in a moment, I'm going to open the public hearing. We'll, we'll hear a staff report. We're not going to go through a whole big presentation, but we'll hear a summary report from staff about the, about the food system plan. At that point, then, Planning Commission will have a chance to ask questions of the staff. Then, when that part is concluded, we'll go to any remarks and public testimony on that presentation or things related to the food system plan. And when that's done, if there are additional questions, commissioners can ask them, but at that point, then I will close the public hearing. When we go to the, to the public testimony portion, I'm going to ask any speakers to speak clearly into the, into the microphone, give your name and address, and to address comments to the Planning Commission relevant to that food system plan, since that's our topic tonight, nothing, nothing else. And I would ask that you try to limit your remarks to say three minutes. I don't think we have very many folks here tonight where we're too much time constrained, but we do want to be on point and not rambling. And then, if, we want to limit any repetitive comments. So, if somebody's made a point already, we don't need to mention that again. I don't think we, we have a large number of folks taking part in the public hearing, so we should probably be pretty good there. If there, on the off chance there's any unruly behavior, I'll remind folks that that's prohibited in a public hearing context. So, then, tonight, our, let me get to my little other page here. Tonight, our public hearing. I'm getting there, I'm getting there. Is about resolution number R 25-015, and this is to address any community concerns about, about the food system plan as it attempts to address food insecurity here at the local level, and how the Planning Commission can best make a recommendation for the City Council about that plan. So, I think we, I will then declare that our public hearing is now open, and we'll move to our staff report. And Dana Bowers is going to handle that.
Thank you very much. Again, Dana Bowers, Associate Planner, for the record, and thank you for having, or for holding a hearing tonight to hear public testimony on the food systems plan. And I will attempt to speak slowly and clearly, so everyone can hear me well. So, the food systems plan was part of the 2024 and 2025 work program for city staff at the request of City Council due to community concerns. And the council identified three priority areas, how to provide healthy food to all members of the community, and to reduce food waste, and also to support local food production. So, those three areas were assessed by our consultant, and were provided in a food assessment, and then, with robust community input. And then, recommendations were made as to goals and implementation actions or opportunities for the City Council to pursue, to fill in those gaps. So, we held some Planning Commission, the Planning Commission was briefed, excuse me, on November 26th, 2024, February 11th, 2025, April 25th, 2025, July 8th, 2025, and September 9th, 2025. We had also City Council appointments as well with General Government Committee to hear updates. The public comment window was open for written comments, and we received four written comments, and I'll give a small synopsis of each. We received comment from Rita Robinson, and it was a response to a statement in the plan about the high cost of food production, and the commenter expressed concerns about protecting agriculture within the urban area as its count, she, the person felt it was counter to GMA, the Growth Management Act, excuse me, and that increasing density should be continued in the city and urban growth areas to protect rural lands. So, that was that comment. Rachel Friedman identified her, themselves as the Chair of the Community Farmland Trust, and their comment was that they support the plan, especially the goal to provide access to healthy food for all people, and support local food production as it aligns with the Community Farmland Trust vision and goals. And this person also expressed interest and partnership on several of the opportunities. Jennifer Colvin identified themselves as the owner of Colvin Ranch, and they also commented that they support the plan, and they encourage commissioners to consider ways to support the Tumwater School District to buy local from local farms. And then, the last comment was from John Flicker, who identified himself as the Executive Director at the Thurston County Food Bank. And in his comment, he was supportive of the food system plan, and he noted that all references to the food bank data was correct, except that there have been some changes since it was compiled, and that as of Aug, October, excuse me, October 1st, the SNAP Ed program will be discontinued in Thurston County due to federal budget cuts, federal funding cuts, excuse me. And that decision was made July 1st, and that came after the research was done and information was gathered. So, they also commented or expressed that they have, they're projecting in the future to have a higher demand, but fewer resources from those cuts, but also cuts to general food donations. And that ends my comments, and if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to, glad to take them.
Great. Thanks for that recap. I do have a question about the remark about Tumwater Schools. Is it the case that, that's, that that, that maybe the only thing that the city could do is make a recommendation or a suggestion to the school board? It's not, we, we don't have authority, the city doesn't have authority there.
Exactly, I think.
Shouldn't appear in the resolution in a, in an authoritative, authoritative way.
Right, that, that we are separate entities to the Tumwater School District. And that they have their own governance body, and that governance body makes directions to their staff. And so, that would be if City Council directs our council to work with their, with the school board, then that would be the inappropriate method of communication between two organizations.
Any questions on staff briefing? Going to go online. Do any of the commissioners online have any questions for Dana? And has?
No.
All right, thank you. Good, okay. Thank you. Then, let's go to the public testimony portion of our hearing right now, and I'll just remind folks, if you, I'll call on you. Oh, it looks like there's an added person. If you want to address the commission on this topic, our food system plan and the resolution we have before us, this would be the time to do that, and I will, I'll call on people. If you could state your name, your address, and again, if you represent anybody. Okay, I'll kind of go in the same order here. I'll call on Megumi Sugara. If you would like to address us on the food system plan, please do so now. You have about three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Megumi Sugihara. Can you hear me?
Yes, you're quite, very quiet, quiet, but we can hear you.
Okay.
Oh. Do that sound loud enough?
Okay, I am increasing the volume of input. Okay.
Oh, much better.
Thank you. I support the plan, and also, I'm just curious to see what's your, stop me if my, if I'm off the topic for the day. I'm just very curious what's your plan of collaborating with City of Olympia, Tenino, other entities in the area in terms of food systems? And also, I understand your priorities and food production to food waste, and a food system has so many steps in between, and just expressing the curiosity of how you see connecting all these different steps. That's just a comment, not so much of question at this point. Thank you for listening.
Very good, thank you. And again, thank you for taking the time to be with us tonight. We may come back to that. I will go to Mitch Lewis, then. Again, if you could state your name and your address, and who you represent. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. You can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, my name is Mitch Lewis. Again, I'm co-owner of Summit Farms. Our address is 11815 White Hall Lane in technically Olympia 98509. So, yes, I'm here to also support the food systems plan as excellently documented, and I've also worked a lot with Rachel and the Community Farmland Trust, as well as Jennifer Colvin. We're together on the Agro Tourism Board for the Thurston County, and, and also with the Thurston County Food Bank. I wanted to address two items, if it's okay, in my timeframe, in support. So, one is around the Tumwater Schools and the food system. I know that you may not have the kind of authority there, but let me just kind of speak a little bit about the Farm to School Program for WSDA. So, for us, we are a first-generation, late-in-life farmers. Again, we're, we've been selling at the Olympia Farmers Market for four, four years, and then I have been running the Tumwater Farmers Market for the last two years. And unfortunately, that's closing now, so there is a food desert between Olympia and Tenino. So, I wanted to address that. But on the Farm to School Program, so as you might well know, that a number of schools were given kind of $10,000 to $20,000 grants, but none in the Tumwater School District. And Margaret from Farm to School and ESD has been a great champion of it, and has kind of was documented in the plan. A lot of it today is heat and serve. There's a lot of opportunity there to retrofit both the kitchens and to be creative on, you know, providing fresh vegetables. For us, we were paired up in the Farm to School Program with Rainier School, and it was a very simple process for us. We would provide a fresh list every Friday. They would order, it was near retail prices, and they would use it to augment the kids' like pizzas and salads. So, my, my first point is, we've been having a lot of farm tours here, both from the Tumwater Schools, Ole Schools, North Thurston Schools, and we're just passionate on anything you can do to support kind of what we call seed to stomach, is helping the kids be the next generation of farmers, you know, pulling carrots for us, and, you know, helping to grow, and, you know, making Tumwater. Yeah, helping around the food insecurity part. The second part is around the Tumwater, let's say, the Farmers Market piece of it. For a number of reasons, the market manager decided to create a night market, that's technically in Ole, it's called Courtside. And I've been working both with the EDC and a gentleman who's now attached to the Thurston City EDC, and then also speaking with Britt around the Craft District. I would think there's an opportunity for a farmers-only and ranchers at the Craft District for next season to sell fresh produce as well as fresh meat in either pop-up tents. There's a lot of parking there, so Britt and us and EDC have been talking about that possibility. So, that's one of the areas that I wanted to kind of really highlight today, that if, on your three goals around healthy food, it's the schools and providing a way for people to buy it, because the market location by the Peter Schmidt School just wasn't optimal. And the second part was around local food production, so anything you can do to support us both in, you know, kind of selling our tomatoes and our fresh lettuce and carrots, you know, to both, you know, locals as well as schools. And then, I think you've got the waste area covered. So, again, I really appreciate your time, and, and just kind of to sum up is, we were part of the interview process that Rachel, that, I'm sorry, Rebecca put together, and, you know, we're very supportive of you taking all of the time for this, and in the end, there's nothing more important than food and vegetables, and, you know, being able to create the kind of conservation environment for that with Tumwater as a leader. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for being here tonight. I'll go to Chris Lester and ask if you would like to address us on our topic of the food system plan tonight? And if so, would you state your name and where you live, your address, and if you represent anyone?
No comment on this topic tonight, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Thanks for being here. Okay. Having heard our staff briefing and had a chance to ask questions about that, and heard from the public on some great points about that, I will now close the public hearing. Very good. If we have additional comments, we can, as a commission, we can certainly continue to ask those. I want to thank everybody for taking the time to come, come to our commission meeting tonight on this. Thank you. Did anybody have any additional points or questions on general matters? Okay. So, then, the question before us, then, is whether we would like to recommend, forward a recommendation to City Council on the resolution. We have a couple of options. We can forward as is, we can revise it, we can decline it. Questions?
I think it's a good plan.
The resolution?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right. Leaving some time for thoughts, comments. Would anybody like to make a motion in regard to the resolution?
I'll make a motion to approve and pass to Council the resolution presented.
I second that.
Very good, thank you. It's been moved and seconded.
For the record.
Yes.
Who would you like recorded as the second?
Let me do that. I think, I think Commissioner Kirkpatrick was the first to second. But I appreciate the other support. So, it's been moved and seconded to forward resolution number R 2025-015 to the City Council as is recommending their adoption of that resolution. A question, Commissioner Kirkpatrick.
Yes, I'd like to ask staff to what extent the comments that we received this evening will be given to the council. Knowing that minutes don't get produced for a great deal of time, how is what we received this evening going to get to City Council?
I believe comments are forwarded to City Council. Comments that are received during public testimony are forwarded with the package to City Council. So, the only reason the comments weren't part of your package is they received, that we received them after the package was produced.
I'm talking about the, the verbal.
The ones we just turned.
Received this evening.
The verbal are also provided in the synopsis in the comments.
Thank you.
Okay, as part of the briefing they'll get about the res-
As part of the staff report, there's a, there's a section that talks about comments.
Great, okay, thank you. Any other remarks? Questions? All right. Let's go to a vote. It's been moved and seconded, and we've discussed forwarding the resolution number R 2025-015 to the City Council for their approval. number R twenty twenty five dash zero one five to the City Council for their approval. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Great. Hearing no nays, our resolution, our recommendation for the resolution to be forwarded to City Council is approved. Thanks, everybody. Thank you very much. Where's my agenda? Let's move on to our next item, which is our consideration. It's actually a briefing on ordinance number oh twenty twenty five dash zero zero nine, the final locket for the twenty twenty five comprehensive plan amendments, which really consists of our capital facilities plan. And I think that's Brad.
So, thank you. Thank you, Rebecca. Also, to start off, this is the first of three ordinances that you'll be seeing this fall that all have comprehensive plan in some way, shape, or form. This first ordinance, as you mentioned, deals with just amending the COF plan to adopt the twenty six, twenty seven, the twenty six through thirty one capital facilities. What was included as part of your initial briefing packet were two components of the three. So we'll be talking and a little bit about the general government and the transportation portions of that. Brandon Hicks, our Transportation and Engineering Director, is online to answer any questions. Dan Smith is also online. He will be discussing the water sewer and stormwater portion of the C F P at your work session on the fourteenth of October. We had some last minute things that we were trying to pull together. So we weren't able to give you everything all at once, but I thought there was more than enough material to get started. So what I'd like to have done is have Brandon take a look at or start the discussion of the particular things or the highlights on the transportation side, answer any initial questions you have, and then do the same with the general facility side of things. We have received one comment so far, and that was late afternoon from the Olympia Master Builders. Staff has not had the opportunity yet to review that comment. We anticipate we'll be able to do that and respond or provide additional thoughts at the October fourteenth meeting.
Did you want to go through these one by one?
I think the best, Brandon is on board. And what we did at the last week's Public Works Committee subcommittee for the council was to really sort of point out the highlights of this because there are so many different projects on there. Once we do that, I think if the commissioners have any questions on specific projects, we can certainly try to address them.
Okay.
And then again, of course, we can continue this discussion on the fourteenth.
Okay. Very good. Okay.
All right. So am I good? Sorry, you're all very tiny on my screen. All right, I'll go ahead. I have a presentation tonight and I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. I'm technically in four places at once tonight. So I appreciate you having me remotely. You know, I would have been more enthused to come if I realized that you get to sit down and talk as staff at this commission. But let's see, I've got, I'm going to pull up my presentation as soon as I have it up. If somebody could please let me know that you can actually see it. Let's see. Are we good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. So again, my name is Brandon Hicks. I'm the Transportation and Engineering Director for the city. I do have just a brief overview of both the General Governmental and Transportation C F Ps.
Oh, oh, excuse me, Brandon. It looks like we have a hand up. Commissioner Nelson.
I apologize and maybe it's my technology, but I'm not seeing your presentation as a remote participant.
Ah, good. Thanks for pointing out. Can we make sure we're sharing that? We wouldn't need to share it. Other remote participants, are you able to see the presentation?
I am, yes.
Okay.
I am as well. I can see it.
Great. I'll just listen. Thank you. Yeah, I'll just listen. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excuse me, maybe, maybe Commissioner Nelson, maybe you can swipe to the, to the left. And then there are different screens that you can see if you swipe on Zoom. Maybe that would help.
All right, I'll try that. I don't want to stop the presentation. So thank you.
Good suggestion. All right, go on ahead, Brandon.
And as Brad mentioned, I'm just going to hit some of the highlights, mainly just focusing on projects that are new or have some, some reason that I think that they need to be highlighted. Feel free to bring up anything that's within the packet if you have specific questions on any projects and we can go through those. And then I also don't, don't worry about waiting till the end or anything like that for questions. Just jump right in as we're going. It's hard for me to see if you're raising your hand, so I'm good with you just jumping right in. And I think it makes it a more interactive experience for all of us. So. So just briefly, what is a capital facilities plan? This is just some general information. It's a required element of the comprehensive plan. And the gist of it is it's a six-year coordinated plan and it details capital projects that we intend to dedicate our resources to. Primarily, or one of the primary focuses is sort of laying out how we think that we're going to fund these large expenses. The capital projects that are included in these plans, they typically deal with purchase, construction, replacement, addition, or repair of public facilities and major equipment. And the threshold for getting into the plan is twenty five thousand dollars. Anything below that typically goes into our operating budgets. Some examples of the project types that you're going to find in the C F P, they're going to be large buildings or I guess any buildings, streets, utility systems, bridges, parks, and fire trucks. The capital facilities plan is not a financial commitment. It just informs the budget. When we go through the budget process, the funding appropriations are made during that time. There are five primary fund pools in the C F P and they're separated into nonutility and utility categories. And, and that's my own separation just to make it easier, partially because we're going to be focusing on the nonutility portions tonight. And then Dan will be coming back in October for the utility ones. The nonutility projects are funded by a variety of sources, really. There's general fund dollars, there's grants, Metropolitan Parks District, Transportation Benefit District, utility taxes, real estate excise taxes, and a few more. And then, of course, the utility projects are typically funded by rates or developments or connection charges. And then the storm projects, they are funded also by, are tax-based. But they've been very successful at going for grants lately, so I wouldn't be surprised if that's approaching fifty percent of their capital program. But Dan will go over that in October. The capital projects that are in the C F P, they're typically within planning documents that often you all play some part in before they go to council for adoption. I have a few of them on the screen here. There's, there's quite a bit more. But there's also some that come from the Metropolitan Parks District, like I mentioned, and then through our pavement maintenance program, which is funded by the Transportation Benefit District primarily. There are some projects that, that make it into the C F P that aren't within these planning documents. And that could be for a variety of reasons. It could be that, you know, major development comes in in an area and we now need to do some improvements that we wouldn't, we hadn't planned for. It could be that there's new initiatives or priorities by council. It could be that there's new funding sources that we didn't anticipate. But generally speaking, the bulk of it comes from the plans that the city adopts. There are drafts of the General Governmental and the Transportation C F Ps in your packet. And then those, those are really meant as reading material for you to provide comment on. But and I'm not going to be able to go through all of them tonight because there's just not enough hours. And we've, we have spoken to you about a lot of the ones that we're not talking about tonight in prior C F P processes. But again, ask any questions you have. And then if anything isn't answered tonight and you think it's something afterwards, just reach out to Brad, myself, or any staff member. And if it, if it goes to me, you'll be able to get ahold of me. And I don't mind meeting with anybody if I need to to help go through things. But either way, don't hesitate to ask any questions that you have. As you can see on the screen, there is over a hundred projects combined between the five separate C F Ps that we have. And presently, they total to over three hundred million dollars. I do need to say that these are still living documents. They are getting updated every day as Dan and I are going through project cost estimates, schedules, and then reviewing comments that are provided to us depending on where we go and speak. So they are currently living documents. And that's part of, part of why Dan isn't here today is because these are, these are definitely still fluctuating. And the two that I'm presenting have made quite a few changes in the last few days even. In fact, the, the C F P drafts that you have in your packet are already out of date. And I'll point some of those out, some of those changes out as we get further. And then with that, please also understand that the totals that you see there for total costs could go up and down as well. I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised at all if it changes by ten million dollars or more. And while that's a, that's a large dollar number, we just need to remember that right now, this is just on anticipated or possible funding sources. And there is no commitment until we actually go through budget processes. So I know Dan said, I mean, not Dan, Brad said that we'd be talking about the Transportation C F P and then the General Governmental because I have my PowerPoint lined out in the opposite. I'm going to go ahead and flip that. So we'll talk about the General Governmental C F P first. The General Governmental C F P supports programs and activities that most people would typically associate with general operation of the city. And so when we're looking at this, just think about police, fire, parks and facilities, and then similar functions like that. Major funding sources for the General Governmental C F P include utility tax, grants, park impact fees, bonds, debt, levies, and then other miscellaneous sources. There are thirty-four projects in the C F, in the General Governmental C F P. At this moment, I believe that what's in your packet has thirty-one. And we are up to thirty-four because there was three projects that were inadvertently not included. And they are, they're, I guess I'll just say what the projects are. One of them is an investment-grade audit efficiency improvements project. And that's, that's about improving or replacing HVAC systems within city facilities. It's LED light conversions, water heater replacement, a lot of, a lot of upgrades that came through our investment-grade audit efficiency work that we did. The second project that, that wasn't included is our solar and battery storage project. And that's about getting solar power, solar, solar power and battery storage on City Hall, the library, and then both fire stations T one and T two. And then the last project that, that was added after the packet was put together is the fleet electric vehicle charging stations project. And that's just about getting some EV stations around as we continue to electrify our fleet. There are five projects that are in the current C F P that are going to be removed. And for the most part, it's because those projects are complete. And so what we have is the Deschutes Valley property. And that's, that's acquisition of properties in the valley. And the reason that that one is being removed is we anticipate the city having ownership prior to the end of the year, so it would not carry into the next C F P. The Parks and Recreation Facility and Market Building Projects are removed and they have been combined into a new City Hall Campus Facilities Initiative project with, I apologize, with the significant increase in number of staff for the city over the last few years in addition to a lot of aging buildings. We simply are out of space. And so we've got some departments moving around. We've got some departments that have gone to satellite offices. And as we move Public Works out to the new facility, we're going to start repurposing some of the buildings, moving other departments around. And then there's honestly just so much needed major work that occurs after you've been using buildings for thirty to fifty years. The City Hall Parking Expansion Project has been removed. One day that will make it back on the list. But right now with, you know, work, work changed with COVID, as everybody's aware. We still have a pretty significant portion of our workforce that works remotely, either part-time or full-time. And what's happened is, and then also with other departments moving to satellite offices, we don't have the same parking constraints at City Hall that we did when that project was originally added. And we, we have more projects than, than we do funding at the moment. So that was an obvious one to get pulled off the list until it is more needed in the future. Wayfinding signage project has been removed. We haven't been utilizing it of late. We don't have any imminent plans to do wayfinding projects, but ultimately that would probably in all likelihood be more of an operating budget type of an expense in the future if we have more. The digital alerting systems project has been removed because Fire Station T one is currently being worked on or is complete. And then the digital alerting system for Fire Station T two has been moved to a larger renovation and expansion project for that building. And then Washington Center renovations has been removed because our portion of that project is complete. Or our contribution to the project. So moving forward, I'll just take a look at the few that I wanted to highlight for you all tonight. First one is the Public Works Facility, highlighting this one because of sheer cost. What you're seeing, what you're seeing on this slide is just the general fund portion. The water sewer and storm funds also have a portion of the cost. And overall, the facility is totaling out to about fifty million dollars, all said and done for everything. And about forty million of that is construction of the facility. The, the one update that I would say on this, it was discussed at Public Works Committee last week and it's going to be going to council as well. We had a expansion of the building that was planned probably within the next ten years because we were only moving over a portion of public work staff that we could afford to initially with the budget that we had. With all of the space constraints we have at City Hall, we're going to go ahead and just do that expansion with this project to, to take advantage of economy of scale, save money in the long run, and also open up space for expansion of other departments within City Hall because we're just busting at the seams. And so at this point now, the office staff will be out there. The remaining office staff that we're going to wait until we could save up more money are going to be relocating out there at the same time as, as operations.
Brandon, on this one, I have a question about, about not just staff numbers, but do, do folks that would be located at the new facility also handle customers? And so there would be customer traffic coming and going too, right?
No, the, in all likelihood, no. So the customers that would be out at that facility would be out there for the same reason that they would have been before. That's the operations component. So when people have, so they would have already been there prior to expediting, moving some of the office staff out there as well. And other than that, our, our only primary customers that we are going to get are going to be occasionally. Folks would come in for things like water-saving kits and stuff like that. And so they might come out there unless we choose to house that at City Hall. The other potential driver for customers, and when I say customers, we're talking one, two, three a day total. But the other potential one would be for developments. And that would be if anybody comes in and asks questions about, for example, like where, where is certain utility, things like that. But I'm- But I'm currently um debating whether or not the development review engineers in my department would go out there or if they would stay at City Hall so that they could be located close to community development. So that when folks come in for development questions, they don't have to go to two separate buildings. So in all likelihood, there there might be a couple of customers a day that that wouldn't have been out there until the expansion happened.
Okay, so much mu- much more kind of back office functions, not uh not a not a public phase. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's very, very specific needs uh that somebody would go out there and they're they're just not that common.
Okay.
Uh, the next project I wanted to update you on is the Deschutes Valley Trail. Um, so we we are currently uh starting design for the remainder of the trail that has not been constructed. Um, we've, we have constructed the segment from Tom Water Historical Park to Brewery Park. And so we are now designing the entire remainder of the trail. Um, and then we anticipate going to construction on Segment C, which uh is from Tom Water Valley Drive through the golf course all the way up to T Street or the Deschutes Valley Park, I think it's called. And that one, we plan to go to bid uh by by late next year. And so it would probably be constructed uh the early part of twenty twenty-seven. Um, and then the remaining portions of the trail would be constructed shortly after. At this point, I do have it in there aggressively for completion of the entire trail by twenty twenty-eight. And that is really about trying our best to meet um deadlines for some of the grant funding that we have and that we hope to get. Um, but in all likelihood, we're looking at about maybe twenty thirty by the time the entire thing is is constructed. And we currently have, uh, for the remaining segments, we currently have about eight point eight million dollars in grant funding. And so we we still have a lot of money to go. There's a, there's a big component here from the Metropolitan Parks District and Parks Impact Fees. And so our goal is is to reduce uh the share for those two funds uh to use those resources on on other projects. The next project is the Community Center. Um, this is, uh, we're we're finally starting to get an idea of the scale of what this project might look like. This is what what I would refer to as the medium option from the current planning process. You know, I'm 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 not certain if this is where Parks and Recreation is gonna land in the end. They are still going through planning. Um, but as you can see, it's not gonna be a small project. And it's not, it's not gonna be um something that's easy to come to full decisions. Because when you're talking about forty million dollars, it's a big decision. Um, and it's gonna have a big impact on the community. Uh, this is the City Hall uh Campus Facilities Initiatives Initiative that I talked about a little bit earlier. And really what this is, it's about taking all of the buildings that are on what I am calling the City Hall Campus. I'm sure that there's an official definition somewhere, but I didn't have time to research it. So just think library, City Hall, police, Fire Station T one, and then the uh Parks and Rec uh building at the intersection of Capitol and Israel, the old fire station. And so this is renovation improvement, relocating departments, uh, and things like that. Uh, this is Station T two improvements, and this is really about accommodating uh Medicaid. Uh, now that that is funded and we have staff, um, we need to expand the building. And so currently uh going through planning uh and and I believe design efforts um with hopes of going to construction next year. And then Fire Station, I think this should say Fire Station T three. But through planning, uh, it's been determined that we're gonna need a third fire station at some point in the near future. And so this is really about getting into the CFP, so that we're starting to plan for acquisition of property for that to happen. You can see that the construction dollars are in future years because uh at this point, we still don't know what it is, where it is, how much. Um, but we do need to start planning for it. That's it for the general governmental CFP project. So you you maybe I could pause before I go on to transportation in case there's any that were in the packet that anybody had any questions about.
Commissioner Kurt Patrick.
Uh, yes. This uh plan will go into the same document that the twenty-year project list is gonna go into and be finalized when, Brad, at the end of this year, about two and a half months.
In February.
In February, okay. Uh, I think it'd be very helpful if the titles of the projects were in some way similar between the twenty-year project list uh and the uh uh projects both here and in the transportation list. Because as I go through it, I see two things. One is the names don't uh come close to matching. And second is the priorities that you show. Uh, most of the high priorities are not in the uh six-year plan. And many of the low priorities are. And uh that may be a a result of what kind of funds are available. But it would seem like there should be some kind of uh that, the reasons for that should be addressed in some way.
Yeah, and so I don't have the the twenty-year plan in front of me. What I can say is it's being updated right now as well, at least for transportation. Um, sometimes, probably the most likely reason for project titles not to match is oftentimes what's in the transportation plan or the other more, what I would call parent planning documents. They're more corridor-type or larger scale. And then what goes into the CFP is uh is is often smaller subcomponents of those. Um, but we'll definitely take a look at it. We are going through some plan updates right now. We can see that there's a way to try to make it easier to link. Um, oftentimes, we do try to have some note in the description, um, or at least, you know, we say what plan to reference. But but I definitely hear you, and we can take a look at that. And then for prioritization, what I can say is the CFPs themselves, they're not in any prior prioritized order. But but I do understand that the, what I call the parent plans, um, they do have prioritization. And you are correct, oftentimes it has to do with with the funding source. It could have to do with the age of the document. As an example, our current transportation plan is ten years old. And so a lot has changed since then. Um, but definitely, um, we can take a look at that.
All right, and my my one other question is, uh, as you uh pointed out, uh, a large portion uh of the funding uh for the uh governmental projects uh is uh from grants. Uh, can you guys feel for uh where all this grant money is coming from?
Um, so for for transportation, it's easy for me to answer. A lot of it is administered through Thurston Regional Planning Council. Um, there are some that the TRPC isn't involved with, like we've received uh NHS grants and things like that. And so, but most of our federal grants are administered through Thurston Regional Planning Council. We do have some direct state funding, as an example, the Deschutes Valley Trail has five point eight million that's in the um capital budget or in the transportation budget. We get some funding from the Transportation Improvement Board. Um, and and so those would be our primary grant sources uh for, at least for transportation projects. Dan's team does a wonderful job of of getting grants for sustainability-type work. Um, and then uh I would say that those are the the main ones that we end up seeing.
Well, in the first two years of the of the governmental uh program, uh, there is nine million dollars shown in grants and projects that we hope to start next year and the year after. Uh, that's that's again, that's that that's a big chunk of the uh money that you're gonna spend in the next two years. So I would think that that stuff would be firmly known by now if you're gonna get it.
No, so so I I apologize. I maybe I mis misunderstood your question. So I was just referring to the general types of grants that we get. Um, for the grants that we have that are in here, some of those grants are speculative. You you put in, the, again, this document is intended to show how we plan or think we're gonna fund these particular projects. So more often than not, though, if you see a project in the first couple of years of the CFP, those those grant funds are secured. And we do know where they come from. Um, and then as you get later in the CFP, so maybe years twenty twenty-nine through twenty thirty-one, those can oftentimes be more speculative. Um, so if you have, if you have a question about any one of the particular projects and what the grant source is for that, I could, I could answer those.
Well, I'll pull through that later. I don't wanna slow things down. We've got too much to go through. But uh it it's a significant uh part of the funding in twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. Uh, and uh it it would seem like we, by now, would know whether we're gonna have it or not.
We 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 do. I just can't rattle them off the top of my head. That's what I was saying. If you have specific ones, we could go to those, and I could, and I could answer that.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, Brandon, on um uh GG zero four, the Prairie mitigation land acquisition.
Yeah.
One, in case you're looking at that. Number, well, I guess number one, I think your contact might need to be updated. It still shows Mr. Matlock. Um, but
Uh, no, no, our preference is to keep Mr.
All right, a a subtle gesture. Okay, uh, my question, my real question, though, is does this rep, does this project in the CFP represent the seed money that's referred to in the description?
So
Or something else?
So I it, I guess it depends. It depends on who you ask. I would say that all of that, all of that funding is essentially seed money because it's a small dollar number to compared to what we're actually gonna end up spending overall um on uh mitigation. But I I believe what most have been referring to as the seed money was the state funding that we had secured and and don't currently. Um, but overall, in my opinion, I would call that a seed money project because it's just getting us broken in so that we can get maybe what we could call Phase One done. And Phase One would fund the next phase and so on and so forth. But Brad could probably answer the question a lot better.
Yeah, so it, that is our sole community development project down there, so we're very, and that's why Mike's name is gonna remain on it in forever. Um, it it, as Brandon said, it is really intended to be seed money for property purchase.
Okay.
One of the things that has been made clear to us from the service and also from our own practical thought processes starting the HCP and collecting fees and not having anything available to have product to go forward, because we don't have the land yet, it isn't gonna work. So we've been looking at particular purchases, the twelve million dollars, whatever that's currently listed, is sort of in the ballpark of what we're considering for some property purchases. So it is um hopefully enough to get us going. So once the HCP gets approved, hopefully twenty-seven, we can start having projects come in at the same time, pay their fees, and those fees in turn will pay for future So what, one thing you'll probably see in the, and I'm not sure how we're gonna show this for budgeting purposes, but we'll probably have a separate line on it for fees coming in for conservation specifically for that. That in turn will go out for not only property purchase, but property uh enhancement and ongoing maintenance and all those kinds of other things.
Okay, okay. Think I understand it. All right, thanks. Let's uh, I guess let's go on. If anybody else has questions on the general government, capital facilities portion. I guess we can roll forward to the uh the transportation ones then.
Okay. Um, so the transportation CFP includes projects that support uh multimodal programs, uh, projects to preserve and improve the function and safety of our existing road system and provide capacity necessary to accommodate growth. Uh, and that depends on planned uh land use. The pipe, the type of projects that you would anticipate here are pretty self-evident. Um, they're just projects that have to do with our transportation network. Major funding sources include utility tax, real estate excise tax, arterial street gas tax, grants, uh, transportation impact fees, mitigation fees, and the Transportation Benefit District. There are twenty-seven projects in the transportation CFP uh proposed for twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty-one. And then there's also three reserve projects, and those are really just there um to keep on our radar. And then if any particular funding source comes up that those fit nicely into, we can slide them in um and and maybe hopefully get some grants or something like that. Uh, we are removing six projects from the transportation CFP this cycle. Um, the I five Trossler Road Capital Boulevard Reconfiguration Project, as it is complete, um, other than some paperwork, um, and some touch-up. The Israel Road and Linderson Way Pedestrian and Bicycle Improvements Project is complete. The Linwood Avenue Sidewalk to sit in a lane to Second Avenue is complete. East Street Connection, which is the Tom Water Valley Drive realignment through the Craft District, is complete. The Traffic Signal Controller and Detection Upgrade Project, it's not complete yet, but we have uh, we have procured all of the materials. It's a federal grant uh that is paying for the materials and a portion of our staff time. Our own signal technicians will be uh completing the signal upgrade work with the components that we purchased. And then the Rural Road Shoulder Improvements Project is the only project that is being removed that is not complete. Um, we removed it from the tip. It does not meet uh the general definition of being regionally significant that you that you wanna see for transportation planning documents. And it fits nicely into our uh multimodal improvements program project that is in the CFP. And so it'll be prioritized within that uh program. Uh, in, right now, the timing on that one is completely dependent on um the environmental impacts. Because if you, if you're familiar with Rural Road, it is very narrow. There's a lot of water on both sides and potentially endangered species kicking about. So it's gonna be a tough project to do. Um, so the first project I'll touch on within the transportation CFP is our pavement maintenance program. This is primarily funded by the Transportation Benefit District, which uh you're probably familiar was reinstated. Um, and so this, this shows, it's it's just a placeholder dollar numbers that are in there. But what what we are proposing is rather than to do a pavement maintenance program project every year, we're gonna try to combine them into larger projects, perhaps every other year. And this is both to take care, to take advantage of economy of scale and uh to help reduce uh staff capacity issues that we have in the, on the engineering and construction teams. Um, it's, it's nearly as much effort to administer a four-million-dollar paver as it is a two-million-dollar paver. So it makes sense that if we can combine uh Transportation Benefit District funds in in hapless projects, it's gonna be a lot more efficient for us. We will be prepared to put out pavement maintenance projects every year if we need to be. If there's low prices, we're gonna get out there and take advantage of it. The Multimodal Improvements and Traffic Calming Program, I just wanted to highlight this one because it has grown of this cycle. And that has to do with the language that was changed in the Transportation Benefit District. Um, TBD funds can now be used to accomplish standalone uh sidewalk projects or multimodal projects. And so a portion of the TBD funding will help fund the Multinodal Improvements Program now. Uh, this is a new project. It's the old Highway ninety-nine and Henderson Boulevard Roundabout uh that's coming into the CFP. It is a product of the Old Highway Ninety-nine Corridor Study. It is the natural next project for the Old Highway Ninety-nine Corridor as soon as we complete the Seventy-Ninth Avenue Roundabout. With both roundabouts in, we would be able to put a median uh in between them and restrict less because everybody would be able to utilize the roundabouts. Um, and we do currently have some level of service concern at that intersection. Um, and we need to start planning for the growth because we're already getting very close to a level of service uh failure based on our current standards. Um, Henderson Boulevard, Fifty-Eighth Avenue, Two Bridge. So this is sort of a new project, sort of not. This replaces the Henderson Boulevard Bridge Project that has been in the CFP for a couple of cycles. Um, if you drive Henderson Boulevard, you'll know that it's got nice wide shoulders for the entire road until you get to the bridge. And then it's just a bottleneck. Um, we've received many comments over the years. For me, my entire ten years I've been at the city, I've received comments, and I was at the county before the I've received comments, and I was at the county before the city annexed this portion, and I got the same comments at the county about how hard it is. For people that are walking or biking to get through that bridge and how dangerous it is. Um, and so we still have the bridge project, but what we've done, because the bridge is in such good condition. There really is not a good funding source in order to widen the bridge, uh, to accommodate bikes and pedestrians. And so we're taking a, a change in order to try to se- secure capacity funding. We have. Pioneer Park right there, and if you've ever been there, you know, when they've got soccer practice going. Or soccer games going, or if it's sunny out and people are up tubing the river. You'll know that that parking lot becomes a mess. Uh, the queue to get out of, of, of the park. Parking lot can go all the way back from to the far west end of the parking lot. Um, there can be people blocking northbound traffic. Um, and it, it just turns into a mess, and you can use capacity funding in order to address high traffic. Driveways, which is essentially what Pioneer Park has. So we're proposing to put a roundabout at the entrance to Pioneer Park. It'll serve both taking care of the capacity issue. Um, it'll slow, slow traffic down for the, the bikes and pedestrians that, that we know wanna utilize this corridor. Um, and then it also opens us up to additional grant funding opportunities, which is gonna help us take care of getting folks across the bridge.
A quick question on, on, a, a quick question on that one, um, the Fifty-Eighth Avenue to Bridge Roundabout. One, uh, ST nineteen, that seems like a really low. Dollar amount.
What you see there in the sixth year is just for planning and design. I have the, the construction dollars in future years, because right now we have not begun the process of even trying to identify. Um, a grant source to pursue. Um, when, when we do have something lined up that we think that we could be successful at. We'll start programming it in about when we think that those grant cycles will come up. Um, and, and move it to whatever the correct year is.
Okay, great, thank you.
But it won't be a small project, I can say that much.
Uh, yeah, I couldn't imagine doing that for less than a million bucks. Okay.
It'll, it'll be north of five million.
Yeah.
Um, so the next one is, is a new project as well. It's Tom Water Boulevard and Henderson Boulevard Roundabout. This one, there is only planning and design funds within the CFP. Uh, the construction is in future years as well. Um, we've had, uh, pretty good congestion at that intersection for a long time. It, it did go down a lot, um, when people started working remotely in twenty twenty. And it, and it, I, I don't think it's even gotten up to those levels since, but we do need to start planning for the growth that continues to happen out there. And people are slowly starting to, uh, go back to onsite work. Um, there's also, um, you know, properties on both. In the vicinity of that intersection that could be primed for development, and so we wanna try to get the planning in here so that. We're not coming in and taking out something that somebody spends money on, uh, in the future. So we want it, we wanna get it figured out now and then start lining ourselves out for when we can get it constructed. Uh, this is a project that used to be in the CFP. It got pulled out, uh, for budgetary reasons, and the need. Um, had sort of died off a bit, but traffic has gone way up on Ninety-third Avenue. So this is the Ninety-third Ave and Case Road Roundabout. We are getting very close to level of service failure on this intersection as well. Um, and so. It was planned to put a roundabout here several years ago. We went through some preliminary design efforts, and so we do have a basic layout already. And now we need to start planning for construction of it. It is getting, um, is in our impact fee program, so, and then we're also looking at mitigation fees for development that occurs. Outside of the city. If you're in the city, your mitigation is fulfilled through payment of, of your impact fees. So it's, it's not gonna be a small project, but it's not, it's not as substantial as the last two that we looked at. Um, I would say if we can get this one completed sooner, we're, we're definitely gonna try, because we're, we're very close to having some. A level of service failure at this intersection. Uh, the next one is Taiyi Drive Extension, so we've just been kinda slowly working Taiyi Drive, uh, going south. Um, until one day we hopefully can build it out as prescribed in the transportation plan, um, and the Black Hills Sub Area Plan. Uh, so this would be the Tom Water Boulevard to Prime Road Segment. Right now, portions of the Israel Road to Tom Water Boulevard Segment, I believe, are already getting started. There is development, uh, for that entire area that is ultimately responsible for finishing that segment. This one down here. Um, the idea is, is, you know, we know development's gonna come in. And this is programming in city contribution to a substantial, um. Public infrastructure improvement in order to, um, put our portion for whatever part the development isn't. Directly causing issues for, so, sorry, I'm struggling. I got something in my throat that I can't get rid of. Um, we do anticipate development in the near future, and so in all likelihood, this would be in the form of a development agreement where the city pays its portion. Uh, this one here, I think I have it titled differently in the, in what you have in the packet, and, and I also know that I have, uh. Brad has officially replaced Mike in all of the projects in the General Governmental CFP as well, so you are, it is an outdated packet. Like I said, these are living. This, I believe I call this one unspecified planning document, transportation improvements in, in. What you have in the packet, we've expanded it a bit, um, in order to include. Improvements that may not be in a planning document that are still needed, and really what this is, is you're aware. Development comes in, and the development community isn't all working together and saying, you know what, let's develop this corridor. And we'll just build everything out all at once. It is sort of hit and miss all over the city. And what that means is we end up with segments of road that are missing, that if, if we could just finish that connection, it's gonna have a huge. Improvement to the city, and the same thing with, with sidewalks and bike lanes, and so this is a project that's really about planning for. Starting to get rid of some of those missing links. And so we're gonna start programming for and planning completion of those. That's the end of my highlights.
Great, on that, on that last one, a quick question. When you say missing segment, is it, I mean. First, for some of them, there's, there's some three to road already there. It's just maybe not, uh, as functional as it needs to be. Is that fair? She doesn't have the capacity to.
So this, this in all likely, this in all likelihood would not be going for those, because we would generally pursue. Capacity grants for those types of works. Um, it's, it could be used on it, but really the intent is, is, is getting those stretches that are just completely missing.
Okay, they're not, nothing's there right now.
Yeah.
Wow, okay.
And sometimes, sometimes it could be that a development comes in and, and they go through their concurrency process. And they're not required to mitigate by completing some, some particular connection, or they can't get the property rights. Um, and if we see, if we look at those missing segments and we see. It's unlikely that this is gonna develop anytime in the near future, but we really need this network complete. It's a way for us to get in there and, and get the process started. And then.
Got it, okay.
A big portion of the funding for this would be that if we come in and we build a road that a development would have been responsible for. Um, there's a good chance that we would be putting special assessment for the cost of those improvements on the parcel, so that when a developer comes in. It's sort of a win-win. You know, the, the public gets the improvements early. Development knows exactly what it's gonna cost them, because they just pay the fee, and they're ready to go.
Very good, that's good. Other, other comments on the transportation highlights?
Why, I get rid of my PowerPoint and I can see everybody's faces. Y'all got bigger on my screen.
Right. Uh, I think that sounds, sounds pretty good.
Thank you.
Thank you for.
I really appreciate hearing about some of the things that have, uh, already occurred and are coming off the list because we've done them. We've accomplished them. That's, that's always good news.
It is for me too, uh, but there's always more work.
Yeah, that's, there's that too. Brad, is there more?
Uh, not for tonight.
Okay, I get, we'll, we'll revisit that at our next meeting, right? Um, any other discussion on this one? So we can save it till next time? Okay, uh. Well, if that's the case, um, it looks like our next meeting date will be the fourteenth of October. Um, any other highlights, Brad, you wanna mention besides a, a revisit of the Capitol Facilities? Plan?
No, um, aside from the fact I've told our city clerk that you're not interested in meeting in the second December. Leading, it's the twenty-third, so it's not like last year where we met, just on Christmas Eve.
Yeah.
If you have objections or you want to keep that meeting, let me know.
Okay, did we get clear, remind me, uh, uh, there was a little bit of confusion about the, some of the November meetings. And whether they were, these are Tuesdays or what have you.
Your, um, Tuesday, November eleven meeting is gonna be moved to the Monday, the tenth.
Okay, okay.
At seven o'clock, and so we'll get notice out. About the changes while I was letting you know.
Okay, good, good.
And then you'll have a joint, uh, work session with the council on the first meeting in December, and then probably have a, uh, public hearing for the CFP.
That meeting too?
Uh, something, a public hearing for the other two comprehensive plan, uh, ordinances, um, right after that joint work.
Okay, not the, not the CFP, okay.
That will be the end of October.
Okay, the CFP doesn't need to be adopted until February or something?
Uh, the comprehensive plan is actually due at the end of December.
Right.
But in, in terms of practicality and the fact that our legal staff is overwhelmed, uh, with us giving them. Uh, a lot of paper to review in a short timeframe, um, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I also wanted to clarify, one of the joint meetings is gonna be November twenty-fifth. In the packet, it said November twenty-fourth.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
That was one of the other ones, but.
We're still gonna be on a, whatever that is.
That'll be Tuesday.
Yeah, that should be the Tuesday, but I just.
Okay, you're just adding fourteen, right? Okay, that's good. Thanks for that, appreciate it. Um, all right, um. Anybody have anything else you wanna discuss? Tonight? Online, all right, looks like we've, uh, seen to our business tonight in good order, and so I'm gonna say our meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Oh, yes, what time is it? It is eight twenty-two.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.